I'd call to order the Tuesday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Culver Town Council to order. Roll call, please.
William Flavinger.
Present.
Bill Githens.
Here.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Valerie Charby.
Here.
Bruce Boss.
Present.
A note, this meeting is being recorded and participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and the broadcast of the meeting recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Please take a moment to silence them. All rise, please, for the President of the House.
Our President of the House, President of the United States of America, in the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, executive and regulars meeting minutes. Council any additions or corrections to the minutes? There are none. I'll entertain a motion for approval. The move by Mr. Ham. Mr. West. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh four. An annexing and bringing within the town limits of Culver, Indiana, certain land and Union Township.
Yeah, and Mr. President, I really all this needs to be in conjunction, too, with the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution two thousand twenty-three oh oh one. Ordinance basically refers to approving the annexation and also approving plan. And I don't know which comes first, but do you approve the annexation and then the plan? I mean, or do you approve the plan and then the annexation? I guess what I'm saying is I think you ought to consider both of them in sign.
Okay. So we'll also entertain at this time Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh one. A resolution adopting a fiscal plan establishing a policy for the provision of services to the next area in ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash two oh oh four. Do I have a motion to approve on first read? The move by Mr. Charby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Githens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that motion was to approve.
I'm assuming first read meant just the annexation ordinance.
Just wanted to make sure because both of them.
Yeah.
Okay. And the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh one. A resolution adopting a fiscal plan establishing a policy for the provision of services to an annexed area in ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash two oh oh four. The move? The move by Mr. Githens, say, or by Mr. West? Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, resolution passed. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh five, amending the two thousand twenty-three salary ordinance. We've got a couple of comments from the chair. We found this necessary to amend the salary ordinance because we have almost a near crisis in the police department. We have a problem not only with recruiting, but we have a problem with retention. And we're only comparing ourselves to neighboring departments. We're not comparing ourselves to South Bend or Fort Wayne or Indianapolis, but the neighboring departments. And Wayne, do you want to make a few comments?
What we went through, we advertised in August for five weeks. But that I don't know what the grade of that. It's been a little five more weeks, five hours, nobody certified. It's by that. Number twelve, Frank and B T go. This missed four, I hope they were proper. But they didn't fill out pop order or something after. But it worked. Best process. Really didn't show up. I was I didn't five, had a five three. Off one, two process. Background and a little bit of that. We got to get the interview, set up interview. There's interview, want to call that morning. This is that. It was pretty bad, which only was comfortable with me. We did the interview very well. Drawing the works. Not too much stuff. But that process that we ought to contact with the Culver by that. Application process. Good athletes. Bring people.
Oh, we did. What about retention?
Well, it's the back of the budget. It's two thousand sixteen, five, two. All the losing somebody else. It's a struggle in the past. From the basis. Just that fact of the changes that we talked about. I'll take a long time to read that.
Council, any discussion?
Based upon the information, and Wayne has provided the history of this attempt at recruitment. It's the obvious investment. Based upon that, we adopt the prescription modifying the salary. Okay. Twenty-three, zero, five.
I think that we do need to address the recent problem, but I'd like to see the numbers in the ordinance.
I'm not coming back, Bill. Thank you very much. The change in the proposed changes in the ordinance. Deputy chief will be at thirty-five dollars an hour. Full-time deputy, which we have allocated for thirty, be thirty-three dollars an hour. And part-time officers will be twenty-six dollars an hour. Now, it's important to remember that officers work only one hundred and eighty-four hours, not two thousand eighty, like other departments. So when you put these numbers together, keep in mind that it's twenty-one hundred and eighty-four hours. So having a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it on first read.
Thank you. It's been seconded by Mr. Githens on first read. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time. I have a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third read.
I'm not in favor of doing that. I haven't looked at it for two weeks. I don't know what we're doing with ordinances. Come back in two weeks and do it on second and third read. That's my recommendation.
The motion to approve on second and third read?
I'll make the motion.
It's been motion, been moved to approve the rules on second and third read by Mr. West. The chair seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes. Two opposed. All those pass.
Ask for the opposed. Ask for the ask for the negative votes.
Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Flavinger.
Aye.
Your Githens.
Nay.
Mr. Ham.
Present.
Mr. Charby.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh five. Then if you want to comment on town manager.
Um, yeah, obviously, after some back and forth between, I think, yourself, the council, Mitch, he's advertising based on the budget you all approved and having to set up interviews in the coming week or two. So we will let you know when that becomes available. I think it could be two to four weeks. Not sure how much time he wants to collect. Usually, you're going to get those applications fairly quickly within, you know, the timeframe of advertising. So we will schedule with you interviews and executive. Once Mitch has candidates, he would, he's always.
Council, any questions about town manager? Next is town manager.
Yes. First on the report is I've got your building commissioner. To date, we have not received applications for the job posting we did for the planning manager, special building commissioner job. We've done this locally on the pilots here in town, TGL, the website, social media. Do you all want to expand that search and use some advertising dollars to go on like Indeed or LinkedIn or some of the same platforms Mitch was using for TM? I think the difficulty with this one is we're not looking for strong skills that for a part-time job. So, and that's part of the catch that we're dealing with. We had, you know, very few applications. And then last time we posted this job, too. So it just be a particular type of position, but so if you want to advertise beyond what we've done so far, you can try that. You can extend this without having received anything.
I was like, what's your opinion on broadening this? As the bigger that, do you think you're going to have any better luck?
I don't know that someone from out of town is going to commute the distance from, say, South Bend or possibly Plymouth or that, that, you know, our local region, but we may need to work session the idea of making this a full-time position and combining it with some other duties. I don't know.
Any other questions on town manager?
The opinion the 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 the
I think that would be okay, too. I mean, right now, I'm handling, prepping the VCA and the planning commission and handling the permits. It hasn't been as busy the last few weeks. It was kind of crazy there for a while. So, you know, as long as we keep up on that, you can always have your new person, hire that. If we get a good applicant, though, I would say we'd want to jump on interviewing and simple.
I would think this local advertising one and and hybrid town manager. Most we change. We have not hired somebody to lead this. And that's unnatural. They just didn't drop this person from to us.
Okay, that's okay with you guys.
Okay. Now your town manager report.
All right. So under street utility department, I forwarded you a quote for tierless, this pump, you know, we had two pumps failed testing, and this is the second of the two. So you've got the inspection side of it, and then you've also got the rebuild of it. So I'm asking for approval for both inspection and the rebuild.
I had asked Bob about the their installation.
What's it like?
Five to 10 years, if you're lucky, been on the high end of that. Not unusual to be on the low end of that. People throwing in the system.
It is a request for a motion to approve an inspection of thirty-five hundred dollars and a motor rebuild in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. There's been moved by Mr. Githens, a second.
Yes.
Mr. West, seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say, saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That second quote is for our generators. They get serviced in both March and September. I forwarded you that quote just so you could see the service agreement, and that one is for two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents.
Do I have a motion to approve the service, annual service agreement, amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents?
That's for Cummins.
For Cummins.
That's for both times? Is that
Yes.
One charge for both times?
It's for the year.
It's for the year.
Yeah, I think this is an annual contract, but.
Some
Been moved by Mr. Githens, a second. Second by Mr. Charby. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
You can still, the trail projects that are scheduled. For the water project on the north end of town that Midwestern is doing engineering for, I wanted to give you a schedule. Basically, we would have the Mark Sullivan and the engineering company obviously help us with getting the bids out, the awards. The bid opening would be at your March fourteenth meeting with awarding it after we assess that bid on the twenty-eighth meeting in March. Then they would be given notice to proceed in April. They would have a hundred and fifty days for substantial completion and a hundred and eighty completion. The project could go fairly quickly compared to some of the end-up projects that we're going to question to you. For that well testing, we did get back news on the well. We are able to do a well in that location. Nice to know that the dollars we spent to do that testing resulted in the fact that we can install it, a tonnage well line. Next steps for that would be getting pricing for that project. And then we'd also have to obtain item permits. It's a bit of a more complicated process, but necessary for doing a well. Bob is working on getting those next steps in place. So we'll know more. His estimate on cost for a well is around four hundred thousand, but these days, it should be what it is. We'll see how that comes out.
We go through the 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 the
The community crossings application, that's on the north end of town. Githens Engineering's been doing the engineering on that project. We also have a schedule for that. Originally, we thought we would be able to do bid openings tonight, but the engineer advised that we go all the way to two twenty-eighth, your next meeting, before we open bids, just to ensure we get multiple bids. The award bid date then would be March fourteenth, and things would then progress from there, similar to the other projects on that end of town. And that is a community crossings grant, so seventy I believe seventy-five percent is public right here. So that's the latest on the schedule for that project. The Park Crossroads Cellar Project, I suspect that Thomas will get back to work on that soon, given the weather's getting a little bit better. We'll see how that goes. Then, under emergency services, I'll leave that up to the supervisors to report. Town manager, update. Surf Broadband has, one of their subcontractors, Direct Line, has come in. They're the ones who will do the boring, and they delivered design specs today, so Bob can finally get a chance to take a look at that and start locates. We will start communicating out to the public. There'll be some signs put in right-of-way areas, et cetera, and Karen will fill you in on some of that. But we're getting ready to start that project in the next week. So heads up, it'll likely start on the west and south end of town and work its way up into town, and then possibly the next phase would be near the fiber hut. They're still trying to figure out what they want that second round to be, but they want to start in the south end of town. Comprehensive plan, I've started working on writing the narration for the first couple of chapters that May Cog and I had agreed we would get going. They have amped up some of their meetings to cover those deep dive topics that I've been working with multiple groups with. I want to thank Culver Academies for getting people onto each one of those topic areas. They've been really great about contributing to the discussions going on there. But that's coming along. Merchant Association meetings, Amber and I don't have anything new to report. We didn't have a good turnout for the last one, so we're talking with a few of the merchants who are more regular attendees about maybe how we want to conduct those. So maybe we moved, we may be moving those quarterly meetings or something of that nature. There are no special event permits for you to review tonight. I did want to let you know that I received a proposal from Shannon McLeod of Priority Projects to administer the ready grant, and I have forwarded that to all of you. I also given that to the CRC members to review because they're putting up match dollars on that. I think it's appropriate that they approve that contract because those match dollars can go toward grant administration costs, as could can the grant dollars. So hopefully, we will get Shannon on board for that. Annexation of Tamara Road, you've already dealt with tonight, so I don't have anything new to add to that. And other than that, I'll take any questions?
Did Shannon draw the figure on the ready grant?
Yes. It's a total, it's a total of fifty-five thousand, and part of that includes an environmental assessment, which most federal grants require environmental. Now, she's got an itemized bill, and you think we got it?
That will be figured into the grant dollars, right? I mean, we pay for it, and then we
Well, your match dollars would pay it, otherwise you'd have to go through permit specifically try to get her. But yeah, it'll work very similarly to some of the grants you're used to, like the other grant.
Okay, moving on, department head report. EMS, are you here to report on EMS? Nope. Jeff is not available tonight, so we'll move on to fires. Terry on line. Terry's not online, so we'll move to the place. Wayne.
going to get you a Saturday night. All logged.
Okay. Art is Amber, huh?
I can report for her, though. She did want to report that when her test went really well. And then also, the visitor center conducted some interviews for that coordinator, and that's underway, so we should hear some news on that at some point. And I think that really was Bob, yeah.
Utilities, Bob, are you on?
I am. I have nothing for you tonight.
Thank you, Bob. Books report.
Several claims over two thousand dollars, two thousand five hundred dollars per year are applicable. Some of them we've already kind of seen, so I'd like to draw your attention to it. Pooters Tree Service, four thousand five hundred, they've been doing some tree maintenance over the last couple of weeks. Auto Park Forest, five thousand fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, and that for repairs to one of the fire vehicles. Jack Dohamy Supplies, six thousand six sixty-two ninety-three. Those are for repairs, I believe it was with a street sweeper. VS Engineering, fifteen thousand nine ninety-one, that's engineering for the Lake Shore Drive project. Culver Visitor Center, five thousand dollars, that's the first quarter payment. Indiana Department of Environmental Management, five thousand eight hundred forty-five, and that is for water and sewer permits. Marshall County Auditor, eleven thousand twenty-five, and that is for our dispatch. And finally, Midwestern Engineers, thirty thousand dollars, and lots more work on the Midwest stairs water station.
Council, any questions? Mr. West has made the motion, is there a second? Second by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time. Thank you.
I have a couple of conflict of interest forms. One I want to address from the last time. I believe Dan Osborne submitted a conflict of interest mainly because his parents or his in-laws have an interest in purchasing one of the units at Port fifteen, Lake Shore. On the back, I was reading, it says approval of appointing officer body to be completed at the public service was appointed by an elected public servant. And so I think we probably need a motion on that, just to cover this, and then I'll get it submitted. So if I just have a motion that you're approving Dan Osborne's conflict of interest statement.
Is he a council appointment or a president appointment?
I don't, it's appointed by a, by a lot.
By a government, by a government body.
Yeah.
Someone
Been moved by Mr. Githens, seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then I just have two other ones. Bill Githens submitted one, he serves as the treasurer for the Culver Youth Club, as well as the president of the Culver Union Township Public Library. And then Terry Wakefield, the town does business with his wife, who owns Suzie Q Embroidery. He's very careful not to be involved in any of that, so, but just to let everybody know that.
Don't need the motion.
I don't think I have those two, but I'll go ahead and get those submitted. The third thing I had, we had two broken pipes over the last month and a half. In locations, Bob Porter concerned that the water did not enter the water system. Four fifty-eight Lake Shore, or Lakeview, is asking for a credit of two hundred and forty-seven dollars and Um, four fifty eight Lake Shore, or Lakeview is asking for a credit of two hundred and forty seven dollars and nineteen cents on their sewer. Portion and then two ninety nine East Akron is asking for two hundred and two dollars and forty two cents.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Githen, it's another second.
Second.
Titled by Mr. West, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion back.
Um, then I put in my report that I need someone to review the monthly bank reconciliation. And the annual financial report and Mr. Clevenger has said he'll take care of it. Um, my final thing is the surf project, as Ginny said, they're going to start soon. Um, we want to get communication out uh, to the residents, um, in a variety of places. But a lot of it, as you said, there may be some disruption um, as they're boring through um, to water and sewer. So they're going to work on getting letters sent out, we're going to send some emails, they're going to send some emails, we just want people to be aware that stuff is going to be coming from hopefully several different. Aspects and to please listen to it because it'll be important. Um, so we'll get, have stuff on our, our website, Facebook and TGL. Um, they are also setting up a website, a webpage on their site for people to go to and it'll have that information. Um, as well, uh, they would like to place yard signs around town in the right of way. Um, mainly at major corners uh, to get, you know, just another point of contact um, for people, so as we know. And share information in fifty different ways and if you didn't share it, you know, someone. Needed their information in the fifty first way and you didn't get it to them, so um, we're trying to just be, get as much information as possible, so. Since it is violating their sign ordinance to put um, signs in the right of way, I'm asking for chances to approve them doing so. For the time being.
I'll make the motion that we approve surf placing um, informational signs related to the broadband project. In the right of way as long as they're not obstructing any vision for um, for intersection and traffic.
Second. And that's temporary informational signs.
It's been moved by Mr. West and said of Mr. Ham, we approve the signage for surf. Any questions? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, pass. Mr. Githens, how would you vote on the uh, placement of the signs for surf?
Four. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. That's all you have?
Yeah.
Thank you. Science report.
Uh, just gentleman, summary update of uh, the litigation involving the Culver neighbors or. Residential or reasonable development uh, case that's going on, uh, we thought we agreed to uh, honorable Dean Colvin as being the special judge, you recall Judge Palmer advised you it uh. Uh, recused himself. Um, Judge Colvin declined to accept the appointment, so Judge Palmer instructed us to go back to see if we could agree before there's a process. And we've now uh, agreed to uh, the Elkhart Superior Court Judge Stephen Bowers as special judge. That was just done yesterday, I assume probably notices were sent to him today. Uh, if he decides to accept the appointment, then he'll have to qualify, but so that should be in the next couple of days, we'll know. If that doesn't work, we'll go back to the drawing board. I uh, sent you an email, kind of a tough dates on some of these things, but on January twenty seventh, the plaintiff filed a motion for preliminary injunction. You recall, we kind of expected that to happen a long time ago and for whatever reason it didn't. Um, and uh, the injunction included an affidavit by James Jaeger that was uh. Some interesting reading, reviewed it all and I'd be happy to forward that affidavit to any of you on client. Uh. That has not been scheduled for a hearing because we don't have a judge to schedule anything for here. Uh, January thirtieth, the plaintiff filed its answer to our counterclaim and basically it's just general denial. Uh, Jeanette has, for the most part, completed our motion to dismiss the complaint for lack of standing. Uh, it includes the arguments that Attorney Snyder made, but also adds to and expands on that for a number of areas. And uh, she's ready to file that very soon, but again, we don't have a judge, so. No urgency on that just yet. Um, and uh. If uh, I'm trying to keep you up to date, at some point, if any of you have questions, please feel free to get ahold of me. I think it uh, as we get into this a little later and we know a little clearer picture of what's going on, maybe we'll have another. Short executive session to cue you all in and ask for some. Suggestions or at least let you know kind of what we're thinking and ask for you to. Stamp approval on it, so, but that's uh, at this point, there's no need for any of that, so. Uh, I'll keep you advised and uh, see where we go, that's all I have as press.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone here in the room or online for until he shut off or ordinance violation? Hearing none. Citizen input. Yes, sir.
John Helfrey. I haven't been to a lot of meetings, but I have kept up with the citizens and type of. Do another school shooting initiative. And I think I would like to see on the agenda. To see, know what this town is doing to protect our two schools. I haven't read anything about it, I haven't seen anything about it, everything. And the fact that many of the kids have a problem with the potential of the police, it makes it all more serious. The public needs to know what the superintendent's plans are, these plans are, the town councils can protect the children at school. I don't have any children in this school, my father, grandfather, and I, I care. I was at a store yesterday and there was a mother with her young children, three young children, I was talking to another lady. She said, I'm not sentimental, it's the school. It's too much of a risk. They're not sending them to the homeschool. Uh, I, I think it needs to be on the agenda. And we as citizens need to know. What is the plan to protect our children in this, these two schools?
Wayne, if we put this on the agenda, can you refer kind of a report?
You should give us some information.
Did we ask Karen?
I think you ought to ask Karen too to come in.
Karen, no, no. That should.
Karen.
She'll probably tell you that the school is participating in a county project that has cameras and software. Um, for observation purposes, uh, but.
More information.
Yeah.
We can get.
Sure.
More comfortable, I don't know, it's not going to solve the problem, but we need a comfortable, that I don't have.
I completely agree with you.
Karen, would you have an objection to putting that on as an agenda some future time?
With next meeting?
If you can get somebody, if you can get Karen anywhere next meet.
Are you asking me to get Karen in here?
What? You gotta see what her schedule is, so one of us can talk to her about the subject.
That's the question, who's going to contact Karen?
I can talk to her. But N W Academy also. Maybe the actually will probably. A month ago or something like that, I mean, that isn't our public school system, but there's.
And the school system downtown does too, yeah. It's short of having a, if this helps you, sort of having a resource officer there whole time. If we make passes, keep the school, and then when we're, when we're up to par with all the people. It's just more time to do more of that. Short resource officer in the school, Israel lockdown system. People aren't supposed to enter, but a normal circumstance that they can.
Policy or procedure on this, it would be good to be.
So then they'll come in and tell us about it.
I know.
Nothing wrong with that. Karen, could we possibly? Do that the first meeting in March, since we have a lot of people we have to contact?
It, it's up to you.
Yes.
You want it.
Will you place that on the agenda for the first weekend, or first meeting in March?
I will talk to Karen Schuman, if she's available for that date.
Yes, Joel.
What is the next school board meeting, actually?
This is upcoming Monday, Monday.
Seven o'clock.
Anyone else? Yes, Paul.
All about it like this, I live at four two four Forest Place. I just want to get some clarification on two items that we're dealing with. The um, ordinance and resolution, the property, what's, which one, which one is that, what's to be developed on that?
It's the one across from the cemetery on the south side of the cemetery.
The executive store?
Yes.
And as I understand what you were saying, you've committed the town to developing the utilities resources out for that. Is that something that's already been budgeted and identified? I just want to understand, is that uh. Uh, has that been funded, is it committed, because this, I, I assume this resolution and ordinance commits the town to execute. Utilities to those, that location.
Yes.
Has that been already funded, once identified?
Yeah, the fiscal plan goes through whether or not the town can do it. Um, kind of outlines the, the basic cost uh, capacity for emergency services and that sort of thing in that land. Um, we're obligated to get utilities down to the Howard property, which is within three hundred feet of this particular parcel. Um, so if we end up developing that property through the ready brand. Those costs would be covered through the ready brand.
Okay.
Um, which is footnoted in that fiscal plan.
Um, thank you, the second one uh, ties into what Wayne's been talking about on recruiting and you recruiting a town manager. As I understand the discussion, you don't have even a potential candidate at this point. You may have one by mid-March. Maybe for you to start interviewing, and I suspect you're going to run into the same issues. As Wayne has, recruiting on the police side and finding viable candidates. You have a plan, are you planned or prepared to cover when Jimmy leaves? She can't stay here forever. When she leaves, who's going to cover the town manager responsibilities? Is it town council, I'd like to understand.
We said, last night I say we said, Rich made most of last time. That Jenny says she would stay on till we had a new town manager. She was originally going to resign as of February tenth. But the council voted to basically extend her time as town manager in hopes of getting a new town manager and. Amazing, that person ended Jenny's job and Jenny would, you know.
She goes into July, Jenny, you're committed to staying.
No.
Okay, yeah. I think that's the question, look, I used to do executive search.
I know.
And.
So that's the way it came down, yeah, last time.
Well, I, I think the weird thing that was weird is that he thinks that this. A number of people would consider this a plum job and he did not seem at all um, concerned about his ability to get viable applicants. Um, and it's how we have and, and his responsibilities in the job, so. So you, but you hired him, but she resigned in December. You hired this person early in January to start recruiting.
Correct.
Has he had any candidates?
Beg pardon?
Has he identified any candidates that just?
He identified one, one.
Yeah.
And passed on.
Okay.
I think I can go ahead and say that.
And again, I don't want to violate any confidence on that, I see names, but unless you change the parameters.
No.
Okay, then I just. You know, it's prudent, I'll ask the question again when it gets closer, if, if you don't have somebody to, Jenny, who's going to cover? Because there's so much that is going on. Uh, is it a, you know, if you haven't thought of a plan, you might think of a plan B. On who covers, whether it's members of the town council, we hire somebody on the interim, but it's risky using. Alan Jenny's kindness and she looks for a new job, that she puts that on. Then she has resigned as of December, considering that.
We also, in the uh, last meeting, have uh. Given him. A little more guidance as far as where to advertise, we've expanded the scope of. Where we're going to be advertising from what we originally had. So we should be getting more candidates.
Good, I hope so, thanks.
Thank you, we do too.
That's a, that's a clarification.
Any other uh, citizen input? Anyone on, oh, yes.
Joel Simmons on eleven eleven North Lake Shore Drive, we just got to notice in the mail about the uh, widening of Lake Shore Drive, I was wondering if you guys have like. Details about when that's going to happen, do we have to move our mailboxes, things like that?
Yeah, that schedule that I went over earlier, um, the bid opening will be at the end of February at the next meeting. A warning of that bid will occur in March, um, and then construction probably April timeframe. Um. It'll primarily affect the east side, Joel, because that's, we're moving into that right of way.
Yeah, but that's just for all the mailbox.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably come out with, um, you know, we've written the neighbors, obviously, to give you a heads up about it. Um, and as we know, the specific construction time, we'll get back to you, because it, it will affect getting in and out of driveways, like it, it'll get inconvenient for a while. Um, much like it was when we put the trail in up there. Um, but specific construction date I don't know yet until we've done the award. And that'll depend on if we get enough bids that we're happy with, you know, having a good contractor.
Karen, is there anyone online? No one online?
I mean, there's a lot of people online, but no one of them is being.
All right.
Next item on the agenda is council issues, actions and items, Mr. West.
I appreciate uh, Mr. Alfred raising the issue of full safety, I think. It's, it's one for everyone, it's a to be concerned for everyone in our community, um, whether you have children in the school or not. Um, and also, and I appreciate the work of the emergency services through the best on over this past weekend, I think the. The weather serving was very cooperative, um, but I think uh. These parties out there, EMS out there, and Fire Department was out there to help contribute to making it a successful event, so I thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Githens.
Uh, basically a public service announcement, on behalf of the library, we have hired a new library director. Her name is Laura Jones, Laura used to work in the library about ten years ago, Laura is from Argus, she uh. Has been on the. State Library Association as the northern representative, they have four representatives across the state and she. Services the libraries in the northern part of the state, Laura will join the uh, staff as of March one. Uh, Aaron will be staying on and basically we're working on a job description right now, Aaron Lawrence for assistant director.
Thank you, sir.
Sally.
I have nothing.
I'd like to take this opportunity to wish Mr. Githens a very happy birthday. Wishes for many more.
Okay. Are you going to be fewer?
Bill?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things. One is, do you have the data that you use to come up with the police? I just. Because I, I don't do anything about data, so that's why I voted present.
That's why I wanted to. Wait two weeks, but.
Just so I know what we used as events mention, Martin?
I'm sure we got Wayne's data, the gap, Wayne does research on the local.
Okay.
Areas, I mean, I can, you know, I'm not trying to put words in Wayne's mouth, but I've seen him in the past. Now, you know, it's a, it's a moving target, like he always says.
Or maybe it'd be better if we had lunch or something.
We'll do it that way.
Know when, what they're widening.
So that, that's one thing and I'll, I'll range something with Wayne. And then the other thing is, two weeks from now, I'll be on vacation in Tucson, so I won't be here. And since I'm going to be swinging a golf club, I won't be able to get online. Because it would be like three-thirty in the afternoon, which would be right in the middle of the afternoon.
Golf, town council meeting, golf, town council meeting, come on.
You're in a golf cart, that'd be hell.
Well, just see if I log in.
But don't, but don't say anything if you miss the shot.
Karen, was there somebody online?
I think it was somebody that had just gotten online and maybe hadn't needed themselves quite yet, so.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, so move. Mr. Githens. Mr. West, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.